In the absence of Chair Yuna Clark, who sends her best, I'm going to chair this. I think it's going to be brief but important meeting. I now call on Vice Chancellor Denise Mayback to give her report.
Thank you so much, Trustee Sunshine, and hello, everyone. I think I can still say Happy New Year. Welcome to 2023 at CUNY, and it's going to be a year focusing on the intersection of belonging and identity for our students. I want to optimize the time for student voices today, so I will simply share how we ended last year and how we begin this year with a promise to keep the faces and lives of our diverse and talented body of students before you as we assure their place and importance at CUNY throughout this year. So I begin with talking about BMI. They ended the year with quite the holiday mixer, and then they begin this year with a legislative breakfast on February 10th at Lehman College, where the purpose of the breakfast is to build support and momentum around a budget request that they want to make for the first time in context of state support for BMI. And so we're looking forward to having President Anthony Monroe participate as well as a legislator as a keynote for that event. CUNY CARES, if you're unfamiliar with CUNY CARES, it is our demonstration project, and CARES, of course, is an acronym because this is CUNY. And it stands for Comprehensive Access to Resources for Essential Services. And it is designed to talk about how we bring together the services and the resources of the university as well as our city and our state in the interest of supporting housing, food, and other areas of support for our students to be successful. And one of the presidents is seated at the table, who will be a part of this demonstration project, and that is our own president of Hostos Community College, I call her President Daisy, who is, you know, along with the other presidents of the campuses in the Bronx, participating in this important effort. So we ended the year with the project director and project evaluators being identified, and we begin the year for CUNY CARES with our advocates and navigators being trained to make sure that they know the social services that are available to our students and how to get them the benefits they need to move forward. The advocates and navigators will begin working on campuses on January 30th to support our student body. We begin the semester with an RA training. So everywhere, there are students who come together to live on campus at the beginning of a semester, and we too, at CUNY, have students in residence on our campuses or in housing facilities that are associated with our campuses. And our winter training was held on January 18th with approximately 85 resident assistants attending training that focused on student conduct review, the associated cannabis policies, Title 10, I'm sorry, Title 10, Title IX legislation, our SPARC training, and mental health resources. The other thing I want you to know about that just happened over the weekend is that our adaptive sports, men's and women's wheelchair basketball games, were held on Friday and Saturday. It was an amazing experience. If you've never been, I invite you to join me at one of those games at some point. It's exciting to watch our adaptive sports athletes as they compete and win, and that's always fun. In terms of visibility, we ended the year with increased visibility among our student affairs professionals and leveraged that visibility into international engagement. We had two members of our staff, Ahmed and, I'm sorry, Ahmed's last name.
Osman.
Osman, thank you. And Sophia McGee go to Madrid, Spain, to present at a NASPA, National Association of Student Affairs Professionals Meeting. And they interacted with other colleagues at that event, and we have a delegation from Italy joining us this week as a result of that engagement. And so an Italian delegation from the higher education system of the Piedmont region in Italy will be visiting us for the balance of this week. They are here to not only see CUNY, but they will make, we will make sure that they do see CUNY. And they are here to interact with New York City colleges and universities as a part of the university games, and they wanted to make sure after meeting Ahmed and Sophia that they got a chance to see just what happens here. So we're going to show them something they may be less familiar with and make certain that they see one of our community colleges. So they will be visiting Borough of Manhattan Community College this week. They've invited us to meet with them as well in a presentation that they want to do, so we will be attending that. But it's a great opportunity for CUNY to have been visible on an international level for student affairs and to now engage with colleagues from around the world. In terms of our veterans populations, I want you to know that on November 4th, we ended the year with an outstanding program at the Graduate Center that looked at the plurality and diversity of our military services, and it was an outstanding event, well-attended. And we begin the year with me being able to share with you that we have a grant from the Bob Woodruff Foundation for $83,000 to improve psychological wellness and academic outcomes for student veterans across our campuses. That's the ninth time we've been able to secure that funding from that resource. Throughout the last semester, proved served 588 unique student veterans and will continue that effort with this additional funding. Beginning on February 1st, the Veteran Peer Mentor Initiative will collaborate with the Veterans Administration in providing CUNY peer mentors with training that's entitled "Taking Charge of My Life," and is designed to offer motivational interviewing skills, cultural competency training, suicide prevention, resources, and basic counseling efforts. After completion of this particular training, our students will be eligible in the Train the Trainers model. In terms of other awards and honors that I want to recognize, Cynthia Carvajal, our interim Director of Immigrant Student Success, was honored on January 18th as the recipient of the Ellis Island Honor Society Beacon Award, recognizing her demonstrable vision and innovation as an immigrant in advocating for immigrant student causes. She is also offering a two-part workshop this semester for career counseling for undocumented students. And our Intercultural Engagement and Student Dialogues Division has received a grant of $50,000 from the Aaronson Family Foundation for the work that they are engaged in. So those are just a few things that ended the year and now begin the year as we look at what is happening for students at the City University of New York. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, with the formal business part will be brief. Action Item 2A is approval of the minutes of the October 3rd, 2022 meeting. I move the approval of Action Item 2A. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion, and we'll vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Past? Unanimous? With no more action items on the policy calendar, I now move to the information items on the agenda. We will now have the NIPERG, New York Public Interest Research Group Annual Report. I invite Vice Chancellor Maybank to introduce the representatives from NIPERG.
So we have with us today a few of our students from, so I'm not sure who wasn't able to make it, so I'm going to, I'm sorry?
Queens.
Queens College, okay. So, but I'm going to call everyone's name. So we have from Brooklyn College, Damian Andrade.
Yes.
Okay. And from Hunter College, Isabella Grujion.
Yes, yes.
Have I pronounced it right?
Grujion.
Grujion.
Grujion, I'm sorry. I apologize. And the person who could not join us today is from Queens College, Harpreet Kaur. Okay. And so I'm going to turn it over to the Director for NIPERG, Farouk Abdallah.
I think you actually want to turn it over to our student Damian?
Yes, hi, everyone. My name is Damian Andrade, and I'm an intern with NIPERG. I'm a freshman and a political science major at Brooklyn College. I've been a proud member of the BMCC College NIPERG chapter since June of 2022 and continuing my work at Brooklyn College. I am grateful to share my experience with you as well as some of the highlights from our annual report. Founded by a group of Queens College students in 1973, NIPERG has been a vehicle for students to learn important leadership and civic skills. Personally, NIPERG has been a space where I can expand what I'm learning beyond the classrooms in a hands-on way. NIPERG students learn public speaking, research skills, um, sorry, blanked out, sorry. Oh, research skills and event planning and working with other organizations. Involvement with NIPERG allows students to get involved in policy issues of interest such as public health, protecting the environment, empowering students to vote. That involvement also allows students to learn and apply leadership and civic skills. In many ways, NIPERG provides a unique opportunity not found in other educational settings, teaching students about civic responsibilities and understanding the realities and threats to democracy and how best to have our opinions heard. NIPERG is a nonpartisan, statewide nonprofit founded and directed by students. We empower students through a host of programs to engage their passion and develop personal and interpersonal skills through organizing, advocacy, and fruitful dialogue. We have an internship program where students can earn class credits, participate in semestly conferences, public workshops, and events. Like most student groups and services, NIPERG is funded through the student activity fee that was approved through a campus-wide referendum. NIPERG offers refunds to any students who prefer not to have their portion of their activity fee used for such programming. We submit activity reports to each college president, to campus libraries for public access, and the Board of Trustees. With the COVID-19 pandemic and resulting into a hybrid of remote and on-campus learning created unique challenges. Despite these challenges, NIPERG was able to successfully adjust its student outreach and activities to offer in-person and remote programming, continuing to offer these dynamic opportunities for CUNY students. As I mentioned earlier, NIPERG works on a wide range of projects and events decided by the student boards of directors. I will highlight a few events here. Events: With the aid of at least one full-time coordinator, students plan and participate with in-person and digital events hosted on video streaming services. Students also participate in numerous events that connect them with community leaders such as New York Congressional Representative Jamal Bowman, New York State Senator Jabari Brisport, Judith Enoch, and President and Beyond Plastic and former EPA Regent II Administrator and CUNY Vice Chancellor Dr. Denise Maybank. And Atik Khan, Khan, sorry, from New York Communities for Change, connecting interest students with community needs. NIPERG trains students and interns to offer nonlegal procedural help in the use of the small claims court. Our project, the Small Claims Court Action Center, offers such assistance through a helpline to those wishing to access to small claims court. Students also involve themselves in community activities through its promotion of information about mutual aid resources, community food drives, menstrual product drives, and participated in a beach cleanup day at Coney Island. Voter registration, voter empowerment, and energizing the student vote. We conducted a nonpartisan voter registration drive to assist thousands of CUNY students with registering to vote or confirming their voter registration status with the Board of Elections. Shared voter resources including early voting information and AppCT Voting 101 Guide. Organized get-out-the-vote efforts to turn out students' votes to the polls for the 2021 general election and the 2022 state and congressional primaries, and participated in the National Voter Registration Day. In closing, through my involvement with NIPERG, I spent the last seven months making a difference in my community and city. My involvement as a board member enables me to continue to commit to my passions and to be an ethical and consistent leader. We hosted many events on campus ranging from registering college students to vote to events outside the campus to advocate for our issues. After the turbulence of the past seven months, I am grateful to know I have a community to lean on and work with when shaping the future that I want to see. I am grateful to know, oh, my time at NIPERG isn't over, but just had begun. I am transferring from BMCC to Brooklyn College to pursue my involvement with NIPERG. I want to thank you, the Board of Trustees, for continuing to invest in students who come from every borough through your support of Group Slight NIPERG. Thank you.
Any questions, comments, anybody?
Hi, my name is Maureen Matarice. I'm the University Faculty Senate Representative, and I'm here in place of Hugo Fernandez today. And I wanted, he wanted to communicate just how impressed he was with the work of NIPERG and what it does on behalf of students at CUNY, and to stress to the Committee on Student Life that we should do all that we can to help increase the number of chapters throughout the university. Thank you so much for all of your hard work.
Thank you.
I'll just say it was a long time ago, many moons ago, as a NIPERG student, and I'm glad to see you're still doing all that great work. Keep it up.
Damian, you did a great job. Thank you so much. It's great to hear the programming that NIPERG is still doing, and you are future leaders outside of this system, and we're so proud that you're making these efforts and supporting other students. So congratulations. Excited to see you on the outside, networking around too. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Oh, I'd just like to say, President and future leader, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. You're terrific. You want to run for office like you have? I can, you'll win. I'm not supposed to say that here. Okay, we're now going to hear reflections from students. Vice Chancellor?
So I'm going to do a little setup here. So Damian, I want to thank you as well, because what you do matters, and you are included in what I'm about to share. So the reality is, "A Dream Deferred" is something that we've heard in Langston Hughes' poem, which is actually titled Harlem: A Dream Deferred. And so I think that relevant for us. But you know some of the wording that's associated with what possibly could happen to a dream deferred, but I want today for you to hear what happens to a dream powered by CUNY engagement. And so we have three students with us today who will share with you a little bit of what their experiences have been in fulfilling their dreams, just as you've heard from Damian as well. So you will hear from Mariah Jagru, I hope I've said that right, who is a senior at John Jay, Mariana Martinez, who is at the Graduate School of Journalism, and Neem Hamida, who is at John Jay.
You can come right over here on the side. Okay. Chair, come on over here, it's fine.
So if you come in that order?
Take the chancellor's seat. You may have it one day.
You can take the chancellor's seat.
She may have it one day.
Can you hear me? My name is Reem Hamida. After living food insecure in Egypt for a number of years, my family and I moved to the United States in 2008 after my father was granted the diversity lottery. I recently graduated from John Jay College, summa cum laude, with two majors in political science and philosophy, and a certificate in dispute resolution. Thank you. Two weeks after graduating, I received a job offer from the Arab American Family Justice Center, working with domestic violence survivors as a case manager and helping raise my family above the poverty line. I'm also in the process of applying to law school, thanks to CUNY BMI and the Rising Scholars of Justice Pre-Law Pipeline Program. The RSJ program funded through CUNY BMI provided me with free law school admissions courses, mental health services, and mentors to assist me through the strenuous law school admissions process. Through the program's assistance, I scored a 169 on the law school's admissions test, scoring within the 95th percentile of test takers. So far, I've had the honor of being accepted to Brooklyn Law School with a $189,000 scholarship and the University of Houston Law Center. In addition, in addition, I interviewed with, and I'm waiting to hear from, the University, Washington University at St. Louis, the University of Texas at Austin, and Cornell Law, among many others. In addition to the program, I interned with the Office of the Attorney General as a student mediator and for Judge Manzanet Daniels with the New York State Supreme Court Appellate Division, First Department, and now I'm about to intern for Judge Francois Rivera at the Kings County Supreme Court. Through John Jay, I interned with Councilmember Farah Lewis, with the Bronx District Attorney's Office at the Sex Abuse and Sex Crimes Bureau, and the Urban Resource Institute Legal Education and Advocacy Center. In looking for college, I wanted a place where I could graduate debt-free and receive opportunities that allow me to excel as a professional. At John Jay, I got that, and through CUNY BMI, I became a marketable professional and a well-rounded law school candidate. With my extensive resume, I feel prepared to excel in law school, and I now have set the goal for myself to become a hijab-wearing federal judge, something yet to be achieved in the United States. As a first-generation Muslim immigrant woman from Egypt, I can honestly say that I would not be here sharing my story with you all had it not been for the program's help. And for that, I'm indebted to CUNY BMI and to the founder and director of the Rising Scholars of Justice Pre-Law Pipeline Program, Dr. Jodi Rory, and her staff, who have committed themselves to working with CUNY BMI and committed themselves to the effort of diversifying the legal profession. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mariana Martinez-Barba. I'm currently a second semester student at the Craig Newmark Graduate School of Journalism at CUNY. So that's quite a mouthful to say. So I'm actually a second semester student within the bilingual program, and that's actually a really unique initiative within the journalism school that really compelled me to go to grad school for journalism. But I kind of want to go back a little bit and talk about my trajectory and how it's brought me here today to CUNY. So I grew up in a Mexican-American household in San Antonio, Texas, so that really informed my multicultural identity as well as ability to speak Spanish at home and with my greater community. So kind of with that in mind, I went on to study sociology at Occidental College in Los Angeles, and while I was doing that, I was also pursuing music journalism without really realizing that it was music journalism, sort of covering bands, concerts, things of that sort. And as I did my undergraduate thesis, I went on to do a really extensive research project about the impacts of public policy on nightlife in Sydney, Australia. So I was kind of marrying my interests for arts and culture, along with my academic interests in researching, engaging with communities, reporting. Obviously, at the time, I didn't really see the connection between sociology and journalism. So like many people who leave undergrad, I was a bit lost. I didn't know what I was going to do with myself, but I knew that I had a calling for storytelling and for community engagement. So that led me to go abroad to Madrid, actually, for a year where I taught English. I worked in marketing for two years. I realized that sort of storytelling was really inauthentic, and I knew that it was time for me to go back to school. However, I was a first-generation student, so I had little guidance as to what graduate school studies looked like, but I knew I was resourceful. So I went on to be accepted to USC, UC Berkeley, UT Austin, and CUNY. And what I love so much about the CUNY Journalism School is that it had an edge from the moment I looked at the website, especially looking at the bilingual journalism program. Not only was I going to learn how to be a very rigorous reporter in English, but also in my native Spanish. I thought that was a challenge that wasn't being presented to me at the other schools that I was applying to and accepted at. And with that, I also just want to talk about how the journalism school, they were very receptive to my application. They walked me through the process of applying to grad school and were there for all the, you know, questions, doubts that I had going into the program, especially as someone who grew up in the United States and kind of considered Spanish as a second language. So kind of talking about my experience at the journalism school now, I just want to say that CUNY and the Craig Newmark School is so unique in the sense that they have us reporting in the most rigorous way, in the most important way, which is locally. So they assign us a community at the very beginning of the semester, and I've actually been doing pretty extensive reporting on the Puerto Rican population within Williamsburg and how they continue to fight ongoing gentrification. And with that, you know, I've been able to improve my speaking, communication, writing in Spanish, which at the end of the day is going to give me such an edge when I apply to jobs. And I have, you know, high hopes, working in Spanish-language media, eventually becoming a foreign correspondent. But I think if there's one thing that CUNY has taught me is that there is a lot of value in the sort of community that you can have within these schools. The financial support has been incredible as well. You know, I received a scholarship. I'm actually a resident of California, and Berkeley still didn't add up in terms of numbers. So for you to all know, for out-of-state students going to the journalism school specifically, it's actually a lot more affordable than the majority of graduate schools in journalism. I will say that. And yeah, I'm just very, very grateful for the opportunity to speak with you all about my experience, and I'm looking forward to continuing on with my second and third semester. So, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Mariah Jagru, and I've been a part of the CUNY BMI program at John Jay College of Criminal Justice for three years, and the program helps to diversify the legal
profession. Funding the CUNY BMI Rising Scholars of Justice program is important because it allows us to produce diverse and culturally sensitive lawyers, to access social justice for our community, and allows our communities to also grow well. I'm a senior at Macaulay Honors at John Jay, majoring in political science with a double minor in psychology and Latinx honors. I'm a first-generation Guyanese daughter of immigrants. Growing up in a low-income family was difficult. I wore twice recycled donated clothing. My parents' job options were limited since they'd never received any higher education, and I didn't have the luxury of having lawyers in my family or anyone who could advise me on college or graduate schools. I also never met anyone that looked like me with similar experiences or desires. Once I joined the BMI Rising Scholars of Justice program, under the tutelage of Dr. Jodi Rory, I knew what was needed of me to thrive in college and what I had to do to get into law school. I worked on my personal diversity statements for three years and maintained a 3.99 GPA. I've had seven legal internships with New York City Judges, the New York Attorney General's Harlem Regional Affairs Office, and the New York Judicial Institute. I have more mentors than I could ever imagine, and work experience spans the law, including personal injury, criminal, and immigration law. More importantly, through CUNY BMI's partnership with Ms. Kristen Giuseppe at the University of Houston, I received free LSAT preparation, which increased my LSAT score by nine points, earning me a 161 out of 180 on the LSAT. I also participated in the UHLC Pre-Law Pipeline Program. I had the opportunity to sit in on law panels with attorneys and build connections with them. I have partaken in simulated law school 1L classes at the University of Houston Law Center taught by the law faculty, and as a result, I've developed my legal writing and research skills and have been mentored by law school students who have provided me with incredible support. I was even provided individualized mental health support through the RSJ Graduate Student Social Work Intern, who helped me care for my mental well-being. Being a part of the BMI Rising Scholars of Justice program has provided me with active is ranked number sixteen in the country. Thank you for welcoming me and listening to my story and how CUNY BMI has changed my life.
What happens to a dream empowered by CUNY? It turns into a tree of life. So thank you.
Thank you.
That is so beautiful.
Well, usually these meetings are more somber or, you know, dealing with the poor reality of budgets and, right, Chancellor? This was wonderful. I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell UNI to stay away more and I'll chair UNI. I can. It's terrific, and it really, frankly, reminds us for other trustees of what we're really doing here, and it's really about the students and, you know, leading the world in the future to make this crazy world a little better place, we hope, because we screwed it up in our journey. Any other questions from anybody else on the committee? That's our agenda for today.
Just a comment, Chair. Just wanted to thank the ladies and say how inspiring it is to hear from all of you. Raham, I'm sorry if I'm saying it wrong, but, you know, such an inspiration to all of us, I'm sure everyone here as well, and what you're doing and represent for not just your family, but for women and young women everywhere. Really excited about the work that you have to come. Mariana, the bilingual programming, I think is exciting and, you know, sky's the limit to you. You know, both my parents, my mom started a bilingual high school, so it's something, a passion point for me, but what you're able to do in connection, and I love the fact that, you know, you tie in finding music and journalism. I think just being able to teach our young people that whatever you're passionate in, there's different ties to it, you know, that you can marry them, and I think that's wonderful to hear. And then Mariah, you know, my God, I could barely keep track of all the things you're doing, you know? I'm just so excited for all the things you're doing and hoping that, you know, you follow whatever journey is there and hopefully leads you back to CUNY one day as well. But we're just so happy to be part of everyone's journey here, so I just wanted to share that and tell you how inspired I am to be here and do this work every day.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. With that, I move to adjourn. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Meeting, wonderful meeting.